We convene in open session, we were in closed session, and first thing on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we consent agenda items. Sure?
Well, it was me, and everything looked in order. There's one invoice that I need to follow up with Andy about when he is back in, and other than that, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
And a second?
A second.
A second.
Yeah, I'll beat ya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. We have one for community comment here, so I'll read our guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you are interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to the board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education, employees of the school district, are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized, and after being recognized state your name and the municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. And I think the rest is just...
Yep, it's a repeat.
Repeat of that, so...
That's the rule we just read.
Yeah, that's our little policy. So we have Stephanie Jensen with a library presentation.
Thanks.
I'll be a good listener.
So I am here tonight to request that our district adopt a book content rating system like the one I have handed out here tonight with a reevaluation and vetting process in which our books are selected for our district. This book that I heard, this packet here, I guess you can call it, this content-based rating system is designed for the purpose of the viewer's discretion similar to a movie rating system. The idea is that parents and students can be fully informed before subjected to materials that may be beyond the maturity level of the student. Today, more and more authors are writing books geared towards our youth that exhibit sexual content beyond what many adults read, in my opinion. Our policy for vetting books is outdated, and because of the shift in literature, this calls for immediate provisions to the vetting process. My time is limited, but to help things, to put things into perspective, I'd like to point our attention to those of you that have the paperwork here, to the second page. There is a content-based rating system, depending on what copy you have, it might be a little hard to read, but it goes from zero to five, and then the movie rating is above the number. You'll note that a rated R movie is equivalent to a Level III book that contains explicit violence, explicit frequent use of profanity, sexual nudity, and references to sexual activity not involving actions such as penetration and ejaculation. An example would be Meet Earl and the Dying Girl by Jesse Andrews, a book that I previously read to all of you and have challenged. A Level IV, V book would be rated NC-17 and beyond. Movies that receive NC-17 classifications are considered too adult in nature for any children to see. No one under seventeen is allowed in the movie. It contains several of the themes found in an R-rated movie and in an abundance. These types of books contain explicit sexual nudity, depictions of sexual organs in the state of arousal, obscene references to sexual activities such as anal, oral, or vaginal intercourse, ejaculations. An Level V book would take it a step further to include sexual assault, battery, and festiality. If I could ask you guys to turn through, I'm just gonna kind of share a little bit. The definitions are in here, there's a content warning page, and then this goes in to explain the rating system and how they, well, and they're sharing excerpts from the books. So these are not, these excerpts here in the first few pages are not necessarily books that we have in our district, although we do have them. They're here to kind of give an idea of the content and the grading or the rating system. If you thumb through to, I think it's page, it says page eleven or past page eleven, but it's Tilt by Ellen Hopkins, and I'll give you just a couple minutes or a brief moment to just look at the second paragraph.
Is this book in our library?
This book is in our library, yes.
Is it physically on the shelf or is it in the consortium?
That I don't have with me right now. There's a mixture, we have some of these books as hard copies in our library, regardless our kids have access to these books. So that's my point. This is a rated IV book, and Ellen Hopkins has several titles in our selections. It talks about sexting, I don't know about you, but I don't know that there's a maturity level, the majority of the kids in our school probably are not at the maturity level to have this at their hands.
Can these books be accessed online on a phone?
They're not from me, through students.
But any student with a phone?
If they're logged into the system, I believe so.
I mean, just on, any internet, Google.
Uh, you, no? I mean, you'd have to, you're looking for the whole book?
Yeah.
No, it's not accessible, you'd have to purchase the book or...
So they can get it?
They can get it through our school, because our school allows it. This is a book that's found in our school library, whether it's an ebook, an audio book, or a hard copy of the book. This is a book that is available to our students at the high school. I, just doing a regular internet search, don't believe that you can find this book. Authors don't typically do that. You'd have to purchase the book to read it through, like a Kindle app or an Audible book or something.
Or check it out through the public library, I'm assuming, right?
Yep, you can check it out through the public library.
Okay.
For this, okay, so just going further into the, there's another page in here that kind of lay out some titles and the ratings that they fall under, just to give an example, and then a second set of books and how they're rated too, given the excerpts provided. There is some constitutional analysis in here, there's Wisconsin law in here, and I've also provided the harms of pornography. There's a QR code that you can easily scan this with your phone, it'll take you right to the website. There's oodles and oodles of information on the harm of pornography, and then the last, the last three pages are a list of books in our school district, whether they're hard copy, Audible, ebook, and then their ratings. Sometimes these ratings are changing, sometimes as this, as this gets more established, sometimes you'll notice that a book rated V will be rated a four, just put into better perspective. So per this rating system, our district offers our youth roughly twenty-five titles in the four to five rating categories, including titles such as The Haters by Jesse Andrews, and this book is Gabe by June O'Donnell Dawson. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent and citizen, asking you to take this home, read it, and have an honest conversation with yourself, asking, is this necessary? Are our students mature enough to handle some of this content that we have allowed? It's my understanding that this program that we're using is an all-or-nothing program, and I feel like people distributing this kind of content to kids should be held accountable. It's 2022 to say that we can't go through an online library catalog, and we don't have the capabilities as a company, not so much as a district, but even as a company, to deselect or offer that option. I find it to be a little unrealistic. So I'm just asking, is this really the best interest in our youth, and is there a way that we can inform our parents and our community and give our kids literature that is for their maturity? Thank you.
Stephanie, I did have one question.
Okay.
So the NC-17 ratings, the four and five, so, and then, so you've also provided dangers of pornography?
Yep.
So are the four and five, are those then classified as pornography?
Um, well, I think I, a five definitely is.
A five is definitely considered pornography?
I would consider five to be, if five was made into a movie or four was made into a movie, five would definitely fall along those lines, I think.
Where did this rating system, where is this rating system from?
This rating system was done by parents in Utah.
So this isn't like a rating system for like, from like movies or from an accredited, how this was rated, this was just done on a parental opinion-based kind of thing, or?
Um...
I'm just asking, so that if we're gonna move forward.
Well, yeah, this is something that parents found a need to have a system like this, because there's not a book rating system out there. Right now, the process in the district is to vetting books, is we're just reading reviews. Like, our staff doesn't have the time to sit down and read a book, so we're just reading a couple reviews, and there's no book rating system, there was a need for it, so that need has now been met, and I...
Okay, I'm just, I wanna gather the facts here, because if we're gonna talk about this in the July, then I wanna have, I wanna have a month to sit and look at this?
Yep.
Because I believe it, from our understanding, it's on the July agenda.
Yes, Policy 871 is an informational item, and all of the instructional materials, resources, challenges, conversations, all of that is in 871, that's on the July board meeting as of this afternoon. So on July 18th, this group will have that conversation.
And then, so in this packet then, is the definition of pornography included in this, how their rating system came?
Um, pornography is not in there, but there's a list of other definitions that go along there.
Okay. Because I believe that the definition of pornography is for the explicit reason of sexual gratification or arousal? And so I'm just wondering if these books in these, this, like a four or five, like, if these books are rated as a four or five, are those books then geared towards, that's the goal of those books, is for sexual arousal or gratification?
I'm not sure what the author's intention was. I just think that the literature that's coming out right now, I mean, you and I didn't have books like this in our school when we were kids.
Well, I don't know, I didn't read all the books, but I do, I was just wondering, like, if you have, these, these titles have the numbers assigned to them, right?
Yeah, so if you go to the last page, there's the list, and I have it organized by rating, so all your five books, that are rated five are first. So it has the title, it has the author, and then it has a URL. So what I'll do is I'll email this to you, so that you'll have a link, and you can look at each of these books individually.
Okay.
So that, what they're also doing is providing content stickers for each book. So if we have a hard copy of one of these books, it'll have a QR code on it, and we can put that sticker on the front of the book. So if there's a reading assignment for a book, or if the kid just picks something up, a parent doesn't have the time to read through it, they can just scan that with their phone, and it'll bring up the questionable content, it'll bring up the book rating, it'll say, this is rated a three, these are the reasons why it's rated a three, and it's your discretion whether or not you want your child to read it.
Okay. Good?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. And we're on to administrative committee reports.
Josh, you're up. All right, this'll be short tonight. Graduation 2022 went very well, thanks everybody for going up on stage there with us. We've got a state champion, Luciana Ozip here in the hundred meters, I would've drug her along tonight, but she's vacationing in Mexico right now, so we will grab her another time. It was a lot of excitement, she was just a fraction away from the state record, it was a lot of fun. We've got all of our students scheduled for their classes next year, current summer school things going on, we've got strength and conditioning going on, we've got band, and we've got driver's ed, and current and future events going on, we've got the summer parade season going on right now as well. So, that's it from the high school.
No Koi Hopki news?
Oh, yeah.
There's always Koi.
Aren't you kind of forgetting a little something back there?
Well, I turned this in on time to Becky a couple days ago. Yeah, double champion in the Pan Am Games, in Greco and freestyle, and, and he steamrolled the competition again, again. Talented.
International warriors are lighting it up, man.
Well, you know you're good when you gotta leave the country to find competition.
And that, it really wasn't much. It really wasn't much.
Neither those wrestlers on other planets.
Crazy, that was, that was crazy.
All right, at the middle school, we've fast and furious with summer school, we've completed two weeks of summer school, and we started our third week, and things are going real well. I just wanna shout out to Laura Shulgren and the summer school staff who have done a great job. Laura puts in countless hours setting up summer school and coordinating that, and has done an amazing job for many years. We have two additional weeks of summer school that start in August, plus swimming lessons that will be kicking, or have kicked off and will go through July. We've had some bands and some parades, just like the high school, and the school cadet band marched, not only in the Memorial Day Parade, but also Clayton and Clear Lake, finishing first place at the Clear Lake Parade, so we're really proud of them. Meredith said that, she told them they couldn't cheer too loud in front of all the other bands, so they, she said, they congratulated, and they clapped, and then she said when they got on the bus, they cheered really loud.
Good for them, gracious.
And they won't march again now, the middle school won't, until September for the Fall Festival Parade, but, you know, just again, shout out to Meredith and to Catherine Bartel, the band instructors. Crew's working really hard on doing some carpeting work at the middle school, but also replacing all of those air handling units, the heat pumps in the school, which cut air AC for us for the summer at the middle school. And things are really busy moving forward, and the custodian's done a nice job kind of working around everything, and the workers, and George's done a nice job making sure that everything's moving forward for us, so that's been great. Tomorrow we meet, I met today with some seventh grade teachers, tomorrow meeting with some group, a middle school community, just kind of talking about some character ed programs and some different things that we want to do to try to work with our kids on their behaviors. And then we have, recently had a school safety and security meeting, which we had in June, and we have another one here in July 6th, and I don't know, hope I'm not stealing anything.
Yep, that's on the agenda, we're talking about that soon.
So we can talk more about that later, but that, it was fascinating, and I know there's a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of hard work to do yet, to make sure that we have everything in line.
Thank you.
The ELA update, what we've been talking about for quite some time, is in its final stages, so we are awaiting our final purchase order from HMH, and then we'll be moving forward and purchasing that hopefully by the end of this week. We're being told material should be here in the middle of July, so that we can offer some professional development before school starts and get the materials into teachers' hands. Last week of school was wonderful, students and staff enjoyed many different events, which included the track and field day, the all-school cookout, which I had never grilled before in my life, so it was success. And we had the Warrior Rally, really to help us celebrate the end of our school year and beginning of summer, and thank you to the IPO, they had hosted an IPO Fun Day, and I heard it was wet and a lot of fun, so thank you to the IPO. I want to remind everyone of the summer reading program at the Amory Public Library. The program this year is called Oceans of Possibility, and there's different programs throughout the summer, it will run through July 30th. The next up-and-coming educational and fun program will be July 12th at 10:00 AM at the Public Library, and features Snake Discovery, an educational reptile experience, so I really encourage parents to get their high or low readers, to get some books in their hands. Summer school is in full swing at the elementary and at the middle school. Summer school will take place here at the intermediate school the first two weeks in August, and then Pioneer School will also take place in July for many elementary and intermediate school students. There's lots of building work going on, as you can tell, around this building. We are getting new LED lights, the parking lot is near completion, George, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder on this one. And also cleaning classrooms and common spaces is well underway as well. Amory Summer Food Service Program, free breakfast and lunch for children eighteen and under will be continued to be offered through the summer, it will be offered at Leon Elementary through the summer, and then during summer school in August here, it will be offered here at this building as well. And what we have upcoming will actually be fifth grade band camp, which will start in August for our students, our incoming new, new-to-band students.
Oh, cool. So I have a question.
Yeah.
So since you've never grilled before, does the bar of success get measured that we didn't have to call the fire department?
It was great. Three hundred hot dogs, I told my husband, I said, this isn't as hard as what you make it look like.
Free cooked.
Right. George, you didn't complain, all was well.
He's still alive?
He's still here.
See, success, for sure, success, great.
Anything else from you?
Nope. Josh has got something. I did see that there was some, looks like there is legislation about extending the free meal program, so I think, that came out via email today.
I did not see that. What did it say?
Um, just that it's, it's currently, they're trying to extend it for another year. And it's in... Under consideration. Yeah, it's in the legislation right now.
That would be a good thing.
Cool.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. If you don't have anything, well, we'll let Jessica take control with you.
Sure, so I'm gonna present on our AGR performance report on behalf of Paula, and Cheryl, and myself. So the AGR report is an achievement gap reduction report, it's a DEPI requirement of school boards to review implementation and progress towards our learning objectives. The purpose is to review and implement strategies in K through three classrooms, just to assist us in achieving, in reducing the achievement gap between low-income students and students statewide in the same subject matter. So prior to AGR, it was Sage Schools. So this is at the elementary, so again, this is K through three reporting. Our goal is to have eighty percent of our students at or above the thirtieth percentile, so we had last reported on the fall benchmark scores, as you can see, and then the column to the right is our spring benchmark scores. So this is kindergarten reading, spring score is seventy-four percent at or above the thirtieth percentile, and that would result in sixty-two students meeting the objective. I do want to highlight on all the slides, the rationale is similar, and then the AGR strategies are similar, so those are reducing our class size, and then small group instruction and title support, and intervention support as well. So that's kindergarten reading. Kindergarten math, the spring benchmark, kindergarten seventy-six per student tested at or above the thirtieth percentile, which totaled sixty-three students meeting the objective.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So obviously, it went from seventy-seven percent to seventy-six percent, but it went from sixty students up to sixty-three students, is that because we had an increase?
We did. And we'll see even a bigger increase, so third grade here is obviously what I focus on, we actually had an increase in six students, so while six students might not seem like a lot, if it's six students that are, you're really below basic readers, it's obviously hugely impactful, they carry a lot of percentage weight, so incoming students does affect us pretty greatly. I also want to say, this is measured using FastBridge, FastBridge is a computer adaptive test, so it will challenge students based on where they're testing, so if they're doing well, the test will continue to get harder until it meets grade level objectives, until they test out, until they hit a wall, so to say, I guess, until they've showed mastery.
So if they, like, say they're having trouble with something, does it just stop there, or do they have several tries?
They have several attempts, so it'll kind of, you know, turn the, turn the questions into maybe a little more relatable way, or adapt them a little bit. A lot of these are time tests, so it can be on identifying letter sounds, or identifying letters or sight words, and so, you know, if it's a minute, that's, it is what it is, but I know some of, like, the higher math tests, those are the, you're more computer adaptive, where the skill set will get higher to achieve the grade level objective or outcome. Next is first grade. Spring benchmark, fifty-four percent of first graders at or above the thirtieth percentile in reading, which results in forty-nine students meeting the objective in first grade reading. Math, seventy-six percent of first graders at or above the thirtieth percentile, which is sixty-nine students meeting the objective. Second grade, seventy-four percent of second graders at or above the thirtieth percentile in reading, which is a total of eighty-six students meeting the objective. Second grade math, seventy-six percent of students at or above the thirtieth percentile, which is one hundred and eleven students meeting the objective. And third grade, sixty-nine percent of students tested scored at or above the thirtieth percentile, and this is equal to fifty-nine students achieving this goal in reading. And in math, seventy-one percent of students tested scored at or above the thirtieth percentile, which is resulting in sixty students achieving the goal.
We added a lot of kids.
We did, well, we did, there was six in third grade alone, so...
Well, it looks like even all the grades.
There was an increase across the board, there was. I will say, second grade really was one of our biggest enrollments towards, throughout the year, actually.
And when we're comparing spring to fall, right, is that spring of 2022?
Yep, this spring, just...
To fall of 2021, right?
Yes, correct, correct.
How did some of them go down? Like, in kindergarten and first, they went from eighty-four to seventy-four?
Into, that's...
In reading, right?
Is the fall benchmark different than the spring, like, spring benchmark is higher, so you have to grow through the year?
You'd have to grow to stay at the same...
Right, and if you haven't...
You have to grow at the same rate.
Same rate.
Exactly.
And I think you tried to explain this last year, but I'm not sure Tom was, the baseline is thirty percentile. Did you try to explain that last year? Maybe I just don't understand, is that, so like, I think of a one to a hundred, so I think of a thirty percent as a standard is a really low. Can you explain what that thirty percent means in regards to thirty percent? So there, you want, am I understanding, am I getting this right?
No, you're right, on a scale of zero to a hundred percent, what we're saying is we want students to score at the thirtieth percentile or above, meaning based on their skill, that they're able to objectively show that, am I right on this, Tom? If I'm trying to explain?
You're saying, like, on the, on the FastBridge test, and like, the STAR test that we used to take, that's not thirty percent, a score of thirty percent, that means we want them to score higher than thirty percent of the kids in the state, or the country. So it's not, you know, like, I'll give you an example, like, in, on the state test, you can score eighty-fifth, eighty-five percent in the fiftieth percentile sometimes, and it just depends on the test, they're all completely normed differently. So basically, on the, on the FastBridge, we want our kids to, we want our, we don't want to have kids below the twenty-fifth percentile, meaning that on, on average, if every kid in the country took it, half of, if you're dead even, you're fifty percentile. So half the kids are above you and half are below you, so we're trying to get most, as many kids as we can above the thirtieth percentile.
You could kind of relate this to like a, like a growth chart, right? Like, as your kids are, when you go in for like, well-baby visits or well-child visits, right, and they weigh, and they do the height, and then they say, like, your kid at, at fourth grade is five foot six, so they would probably be in the eightieth or ninetieth growth percentile, because that means they're that far above what the average growth is for a child that age, right?
That's a great analogy, because as you watch their growth curve, right, you want them to continue to follow their curve, and if we're seeing, based on data, and we can of course produce all sorts of reports, if we're seeing that they're not following their growth curve, that's when we would provide interventions to say, you're not meeting this percentile, or you've taken a dip, we need to look at, and maybe go back, and backfill some...
So in first grade, when we have a fifty-four percentile, if this were like, people, children growing, what type of resources would we provide them with?
A student at the fifty-fourth?
Like, yeah, my, my thing is, is like, I looked at this, and I just wrote down all the numbers, and I saw that we want eighty percent of our students to be above the thirtieth percentile.
Yeah.
That's our goal, right?
Right.
Eighty percent. But like, in the spring... Eighty percent. But like, in the spring, we were at fifty-four percent for some of them. Like I said earlier, the kindergarters and the first graders actually went down while second grade and third grade went up in percentage. But everyone outside of that first year kindergarten reading, everyone is below an eighty percentile. So I guess my thing is, is what, what are we going to do to change these numbers so we're rocking?
Really, what we talked about last board meeting was a new reading curriculum. A new reading curriculum in itself won't do the work that we need it to do, but really focusing on professional development. We have so many great supports, you know, one of the big things is small class sizes. That really is one of our driving purposes behind having small class sizes is you can spend more time with kids. You get to know your kids. You can provide them with differentiated support. We also are moving towards a school-wide title program. So that means instead of pulling small groups out and working, we're recognizing. So for example, I can talk about second grade and coming to third, that we're really looking at pushing in our title specialists to support more students at one time. Using our new reading curriculum, you know, really focusing on those foundational skills. We have another program that we're using, which is a phonological and phonemic awareness program, which is called Hegarty, that we just started using about a year and a half ago. I will say, the data that I'm seeing is, is pretty common. You know, our K and first graders were our ones that are honestly learning just, they're still learning how to go to school. I think if you were to talk to Cheryl and Paula, and I wish they were here to say that, they really are learning just how to share, how to play with kids. And so we're focusing on reading, but there's a lot that we're working on at that same time.
We're not dissimilar from the rest. I had a meeting with the second grade team plus title services plus special ed and Cheryl when we were talking about ESSR. And ESSR, remember, we added a first grade and a third grade instructor. I met with them because I wanted to know what have you done that's working and what have you done that doesn't work? But before that, I said, what's wrong? What is happening? And what Jessica just said is what second grade team share with me. Our second graders, they don't really understand how to go to school right now. We can't get them ready for academic tasks. Because remember, as second graders, they missed two months in the fall. And as first graders, they missed March, April, and May. And they'd only been in school for two years. So that was the big battle right then and there. Not only did they not understand how to go to school in many cases, there were enormous behavior problems that were associated with that. So they couldn't teach reading or math. Reading specifically is the big issue. As you've probably heard me say before, and Tom can corroborate this, where the loss of learning has occurred most in elementary and intermediates has been in reading, because that's direct instruction. Where it's occurred in the middle and high school is math, because that's direct instruction. And that's what we have seen happen here. And that's what they've seen across America. Those scores have gone down for those reasons. All throughout the CISA, all the superintendents that I've met with have said the same thing. Our scores are abysmal, and those are the reasons that they're stating. We're very similar.
Have we beefed up our, uh, I, maybe this doesn't happen anymore because my kids are old now, but book bags, there used to be book bags that went home in the elementary school that, because we all know that for good readers, kids have to just read, right? So that makes that. So we kind of beefed that up to see if, if we, do we send kids home with one book a night or two books a night? Or do you know, is there been any changes to that? Like how much additional reading they can do outside of?
So book bags are still going home at the elementary nightly. You know, it's, they're leveled readers based on where they're at. I can speak for the elementary and the intermediate. We cultivate relationships with the parents so much and really speak to, we need you at home to support us. You know, to gra, to grow a great reader, we need help at home. So those book bags are, are very, very important. We have teachers who recognize these gaps. And every time, you know, something comes out that, like Hegarty, for an example, is a program that really is new and is really meets a lot of those foundational skills. It's amazing to me that we have teachers that say, yep, I see that gap. What can we do? They're recognizing it. Another large component is just teaching our kids to have stamina, stamina to be at school, to be very honest, to last a whole day, to be able to sit down and read a book for five or 10 minutes is, is really a foundation that we're working on with them.
One of the teachers at that second grade meeting that I had was Lynette Wince, and she said, this is her phrase, perseverance of academic task is very different than it's ever been in my career. And Lynette's been doing this for a while. And that's what I think you're saying.
Yes.
The perseverance to read, to put your nose to the grindstone and do that for ten, fifteen minutes, they don't have the capacity to do that. Whereas they did before because they had been doing it for two years already. They didn't do that at home, because parents couldn't in most cases do that. They weren't there in some cases to do that. So that's a huge change. This has never happened in the history of education. And we're seeing the after effects of it having had happened, and it's not good.
I think, you know, and as long as I've been sitting here listening to these reports, I've seen that we've been below our goal of eighty percent. But I haven't ever seen us go backwards from the, from the fall to the spring. Obviously, it's good that it, that our second graders, our third graders, but then the, the mental capacity for these kids and their touch and span is longer too than the kindergarten and first grader. So I think that would be a, a good summation to make out of that data, looking at that.
I should have a kindergartner. And so when I, I look at Harper and her going through COVID, she was kept home for two years. I mean, a year and a half with no social interaction, really. She was a micropreemie, so she was at home for even longer. But, you know, the, the kids are coming to school, dealing with a lot more than just simply let's learn to read and write and do math. A lot of it is just, like Sean said, learning how to just be here, how to function, how, how to possibly be at home. You know, they, they bring a lot to school with them and we recognize that, which is why we also focus on their social emotional learning and wellbeing and supporting them as human beings as well.
And I don't want anything that was just shared to be perceived as excuse, because it's not. Those are explanations for what's occurred. Now we got a job, and now we got to take care of business, get them back where they need to be. I believe we have the right staff to get it done, but it's going to take a while. This might trail, trail with us all the way through the, the graduation of these kids. It's very possible. Hope not. Could.
I think that's the way you can, the only way you can solve a problem is to understand the why first.
Sure.
So.
Well, whenever you talk about whys, I think screen time is a big part of it. Kids are so, they want, they want stimuli and they want.
Some were raised on screen time the last two years.
Absolutely.
And it's very hard to sit and read a book. It's not, it's not instant.
A constant, yeah.
We have a lot of tools in place to meet these gaps. We really do. Teachers are on board. They recognize it. They're constantly growing. Having a new curriculum and having that support. And we've got lots of professional development set up. I have no doubt that will be successful, and we have teachers that want to be successful, but much like Sean had just said, you know, it's, it's building these kids up. And it, it takes a while to go back and backfill.
Yeah. Well, we're taking steps in the right direction.
We are. Absolutely.
We can see improvement.
Okay. Uh, next we'll go on to our informational items. We have school farm and CTE.
Okay. I'm going to get some help from Derek and Josh, who are here, and give full credit in a moment for this presentation to Becky. Uh, you'll know what I mean when we get there. It's fun. It's all good. So we have a site across the street that we're doing some farming on and we're doing some house building on. Both are ongoing. So the acreage across the street is the thirty-plus acres of land. We have a planning committee, and you'll see the list of those folks on the screen, that have met once and are set to meet again here in a couple of weeks. Keith and Shaw, based on their background in ag, are part of that group. Couple of people that are outside of district, including Kevin from Minglewood, Gary Ganji, and we have some staff involved here, including from our administrative team, Josh and Paula. Uh, so we're doing some crops. We're doing a corn maze. We got a store. We got animals. We got an orchard. We got park and hiking trails. We got Christmas trees. We got home building sites. So it's not just a crop, which truly is what it's been for the longest time, since the, as far as I can remember.
Well, that's all we have this year is the crop, but these are the things that we would like to.
Well, not all. No, we got some other stuff, and we're going to have our gentleman here talk about that. So if you get to the map, and this is the part I want you to pay attention to, so you know what's where. Becky did say, make sure they understand it's not to scale. So those are not like fourteen-foot tall pigs. They're normal-sized animals. But you get the plan for the animal will be. So, um, this is the plan. We've got a parking lot area there right off of Minneapolis, which would be on the far northern side of that property. A store, we would sort of like to create a store, and you can chime in anytime you'd like, Derek. That sort of mirrors what they do up at Pure and Simple, where we can have an opportunity for local ag to come in and sell their products, managed by our FFA. Uh, then we've got a spot for animals, a sort of four, four-month farmer, so to speak. So we're looking at the months preceding the Polk County Fair. So really the time we're talking about right now, looking at doing that next year. So they're from basically April forward until July. Uh, we've got twenty-one point six acres. You'll see there are crops. Right now it's corn. Uh, that is a corn maze. Uh, we have up near Minneapolis. That will be about five acres. That isn't in yet. We'll have that in the fall. Uh, we've got some Christmas trees already planted with the first graders. We did that at the tail end of the school year. We're looking at putting some trails. The trails are not in yet. Uh, it's pretty hairy back in that area, if you've never walked back there. It's not really meant for crops. Uh, it's meant for what we're going to use it for. And then lastly is the house building endeavor. Uh, in technicality, it's not one, two, three, but rather three, four, five, because we built two over by slumber land. So on this plot of land, those three houses, there's room for one more there. Uh, before you turn the corner, then we're out of space. And then it's a matter of what we're going to do next. Our hope is to be able to go off Otis and have a road there where we can build houses on either side of that. If you look at Johnson Street, they got what there? Probably twelve, eleven, twelve?
Yep, thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen. So our hope is to work with the city, uh, to be able to make that happen. Infrastructure is expensive, obviously. So we're going to take a year off of house buildings to try and create that arrangement. The city's been very busy with what they've done downtown, with the main drag and the city center and the library and all of that. So we're going to see if we can get a plan in order to, for them to help us with that, for us to partner there. So that's the broad brushstrokes overlay. We meet again on July, I think it's the thirteenth, twelfth, thirteenth, twelfth, and have more conversation. I'm not sure if Josh or Derek want to come up to the mic and share any thoughts that I might have missed. This would be the time. Derek's going to come up and share some thoughts on things, I guess. And you can certainly ask questions anytime you want.
So, so we, when we started talking about this, it's all steps. We're, we're in step one. And we'll be in there for two or three years, probably, maybe even longer, depending on what we're doing. Uh, so some of the things that we started, we got, we got the corn in, like he said. Um, the corn maze is actually going in, um, in a week. Week or two, somewhere in there. Uh, we'll be, we'll be putting the corn maze, um, through the, the front part right there. Uh, the Christmas trees went in, in May with the kindergartners. Uh, we planted about three hundred trees. And, uh, we'll be adding to that next year and so on and so forth. It'll come out a little farther than it shows there. But, um, so we're excited that we got to do that. It was a very successful program and the kids were very excited. And, um, it was just really fun to do. Our next goal is to, um, what we would really like to do by, um, so with the corn maze, we're going to have, like we did last year, we did the haunted hayride and the, um, around the, the area. We want to do something like that with a corn maze. And we're also going to have a hog roast. Uh, we're going to do this, uh, right before, uh, Halloween. So I think it's a week before. So I think it's a Friday and Saturday night, um, the week before Halloween. And, um, we would do it during Halloween, but we have the National FFA Convention at that time, so we can't do it. So it'll be the week before that. But we're really excited that all of this is already happening. Our goal is, is that we get electricity and water out to our shed, uh, this, uh, this summer, uh, sometime or the fall, because we would like to start our animals, um, our four-month farm kind of thing, where we'll, um, we, we will have kids that will want to show animals at the fair. This is a way for them to do it. We'll actually have beef sheep and hogs that we'll put out there just for, and they'll train them right there. The logistics are not all done with this. We're, this isn't all in the planning stage, but this is the, the hope that we will eventually do. And, and then we will, uh, they will all be gone by August.
And water, water is, I'm not an ag person by trade, but water is an issue. I learned that the animals are not really fond of drinking city water based on what it tastes like to them. So we don't have a well. So we have to figure out a solution to that. There is a well there, but it's not on our property.
Yes, Gatorade and Jell-O.
Gatorade is what I've told. I didn't know that, but I, I'll take your word for it.
Carter Gatorade and.
Carter Gatorade does attract.
Make no mistake, they will get thirsty.
They will, but yes.
They will.
But it's a little.
So we've had that conversation a couple of times now to try and figure out what we do there.
So we're excited that we're actually, you know, things are happening already, um, and with phase one, and we're very excited about what's happening. So. Does anybody have any questions for me with the agriculture part of it?
I have your barn picture area in my truck right now.
Awesome.
If you would like it.
I would like it.
I could give you the keys and you and Mr. Ganji maybe could go and unload that if you'd like. That'd be fabulous. Because I'm tired of carrying it around in my truck for a whole week. It's in the back. Just throw the open.
Now, remember, the portion of land between the corn maze and the parking lot, that's a private residence. That land is not ours. Josh, could you come up and we could chat with you for a moment or two? So we have gone again through four, uh, on through almost a successful completion of five homes. Uh, we've got, the next one started the year after next. Uh, it's been a learning curve. We've gotten better every year. I think we could say that safely. And, uh, we're in the process. We soon will be selling house number five. So this is good. Four, sorry.
Four, exactly.
And, um, I think we could feel really proud about what we've done so far. Questions for Josh or anything that you wanted to say, Josh?
No, I'm good.
So.
This is a moment to shine.
You're such a shabby guy, Josh.
Toot, toot the kids' horn, because they've done a great job.
They've done a great job. Um, I just kind of looked a little bit. I would say eleven out of our fourteen this year are either in some sort of trade during the summer now or going into a trade next year after having graduated this year. Summer repeats, uh, seems to be a popular program. Um, we are getting better. I would say the last house we built was our best house. And then, uh, we'll just add right here, we stubbed water and sewer from number two to number three last year. So it's ready to go. We'll need to get that surveyed by a surveyor, probably Ed Flannam, who has donated services in the past. And then that'll go to a plan commission at the city and then get approved by the council. And then the big question will be down in the southwest corner.
So will that third lot off, off of Hillcrest be built next year then?
The following.
Okay, so next year, there's not going to, you're not going to run the program?
Correct.
And then, so if kids are interested, I mean, hopefully they either took it this year or.
We, we made the kids aware of this last year, so they could kind of plan.
Okay.
In my twenty-five-plus years, I've never seen a purer expression of learning than watching these kids build these houses. It's been spectacular. I've been there when they're putting trusses up. I've been there when they're trying to measure the, put appliances in. And Josh does such a wonderful thing. He literally just asks them questions and they problem solve it. And it's, it's fantastic.
I tell them we have a problem every day and we have to solve it.
Yep.
And we do have a problem every day, and nothing will go on time. Those are the two rules.
Grade levels in there? Are they, are they mainly junior seniors or?
Junior seniors. I did, I specifically tried to get a sophomore this year, so that hopefully this person will take it again when they're a senior.
Okay.
Because having repeats is very helpful.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Go ahead.
And they get, uh, they get WITC or Northwood Tech certification, embedded diploma, uh, those that choose to do it. I had, um, five or six graduate this year. Uh, two more will graduate next year because they didn't take their math class yet. And then they, they all get a cert, certificate from a, a union trade. It's just a certificate, but it does help with our Fund Fifty-Seven, our CT incentive grant. So that's a nice source of income also. And then we've got kids, uh, one's working at countryside, one started his own construction business and helped us with house number four. Donated his services. Uh, so that was nice. Giving back. Yeah, I think it's, uh, going well.
Have you seen kids that become leaders within the crew that you may not have, that surprised you?
Oh, of course. Oh, of course, but there are kids, I don't care what I teach, they, they have a gift or a talent in some sort of area, and you have to find it, and then let them do that. And then I like to let the kids that are the leaders teach the other kids, because that shows to me that they actually learned what, what they were supposed to learn, that's the best assessment there is.
Yeah. So if you're not building the house, which I'm assuming takes up a lot of your time, especially the mornings, are there some other classes then that will be offered this year?
We're full, we're, we're full.
Yeah, so other classes that haven't been able to be offered?
Correct, or more sections up.
Oh, extra sections of things, okay.
And he does have a foundational class for this that'll.
Yep, that'll run in the spring, and then we'll actually make the interior walls for house number five.
Oh, okay.
That helps us get a little head start.
Right.
And then there's a print reading that I'll teach as its own section, which I have not done in the past, so this will be nice, as part of that Northwood Tech Embedded Diploma.
Building materials coming down a little bit and costs.
Yes. Everything else is up, though.
Yeah, great.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, Derek.
Yes. Oh, you're going to throw them the keys?
I'm not going to throw them to them.
We'll pass them.
Poor Cl- poor Clissel, I thought I'd take it out. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, I was going to be here earlier tonight, but I didn't get to.
You can just bring it back and throw it back in the parking lot. Throw the keys on the floor, thank you.
Good thing this is a recorded meeting.
Yeah. Call a vehicle up there.
It's our next room.
It's a green Chevy.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Coming from the guy that leaves his keys in his vehicle every day.
That's, I told the kids, since I had a senior this year, we knew that you leave your keys in the car, and I said, you know what you guys need to do for a senior prank, is take Mr. Gould's car, don't like, take it anywhere, just like, off-premises school, put it in a different school, that'd have been a great senior prank. Nobody listened to it.
He would like that.
Aren't you lucky?
From a law enforcement perspective, I think that's a bad idea.
Probably.
You may want to edit that out.
Because I did that to one of my kids, I moved the vehicle, because I had another set of keys, yeah, Sam come on, she's late. Dad? On to next, basketball hospitality.
Okay, well, we were recognized by the Officials Association for our hospitality as a school district for basketball, we host, I mean, Mr. Gould's more familiar than I am, but all the way through the end of the deal before we get to state, we're up through sectional finals every single year, I can't imagine that every district is being hospitable to their basketball officials, but we are, and I'm very proud of that.
Both Dale and I are part of this organization, so maybe Dale has more of the elder statesman wants to explain this.
So this is an award from the Arrowhead Officials Association, which is a group of officials in our area of Wisconsin, and it's a pretty, pretty big honor, I mean, these are officials that like to come and want to come work games in Amory, and, and Josh and Jeff would know, it's getting harder and harder to find officials, so, to have a group of people that like to come here and work games is a big deal, and, and they really appreciate the, the hospitality that they get when they come here, so.
We treat them right, the fans treat them with respect, too, and they, they walk out of here usually with smiles on their faces.
Nothing beats tournament basketball, especially in a small venue like ours.
Well, this is regular season, too, this is, you know, through everything.
Yeah, we do a nice job.
Yep.
So, congratulations to our athletic department, of which Josh has certainly been a part and still is a part.
Cool, thank you.
It's quite a, quite an honor to be recognized.
It is, yeah, it's, I mean, that's 50-plus school, or probably more than that, you know, so.
Yeah.
So it's a big deal, yeah.
All right. Next we'll go to our open enrollment trends.
Okay, there are two periods of open enrollment, the traditional period, which happens in February, March, and then there's the alternative window, which is the other months of the year. What you see here are open enrollments into district during the traditional period, you'll see their grade level listed in the far left column, then the student listed as student A through student U, and then lastly, the resident district, the place they're coming from, to Amory. There are a lot more open enrollments that happen outside of the traditional window in the summer, there's quite a few. So what you asked me to put together was, who amongst the open enrollees from outside district into district are kids that are in our clubhouse, meaning that they were in our clubhouse from another district and then chose to have their kid, when school age, remain in our district, and there are 13 4K, or pre-K kids, and of those 13, four. So by that percentage, if four of every 13 kids, when we expand our operation in childcare, if we can expand it by, say, 25 kids, that's six, eight, perhaps 10 kids, and you do the math on that, that's a good thing financially for the district and academically for the district. So this is a snapshot of a trend, it certainly could be an aberration, but my suspicion is it's probably not, in my conversations with Nina and with Cheryl, they didn't seem to think so either, it's usually about this, so this is a good thing. So that's my report to you in regards to open enrollment, if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Well, that's why we're doing it.
I think it's a good place to send your kids to school, and some folks from other districts feel the same, and I know it's out of workplace convenience as well, they work here potentially.
And is this the, the first year that we've kept track of this?
Oh, we could go back and look at it from way back if we wanted to.
So we have that data going back and.
As far back as power school will, will, maybe it wouldn't be power school, but as far back as guidance offices tracked it, way back through the days of Suzie Thayer, I bet we could get at least a decade worth of data, if you want me to put that together, I'd be happy to do so.
I would, I would love to see that.
Yeah, we can do that.
So you're asking, like, to know how many of the kids, like especially in pre-K, came from clubhouse?
How about we look back from the beginning?
Yeah.
How about we look back from the beginning of clubhouse?
Right.
Since it would be.
Yeah, if you've got.
Strange comparison, because clubhouse didn't exist before a 10-year.
Right, we want to know how many kids from clubhouse opened and rolled into the district.
I will.
Right.
Nina has got an excellent memory, she, she names them off immediately, she knows who's who immediately.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, go ahead, we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, next is our curriculum cycle.
We had some conversation last meeting about the length of the curriculum cycle, what's up next, is it 10 years, is it 11 years, and Jessica, you certainly can jump in anytime you want, what you see on the screen is the rather lengthy curriculum cycle, so what do we got, six, nine, 10 years? The present year, we just have ordered for, or will be here this week, is 2022, 2023, which is 4K through five, reading language arts, so next up on the docket, obviously, is science. So what we do in advance, we send correspondence from curriculum director, Jessica, or Ali prior to her, to that group and say, this is your year to do your research and your study, so be prepared when your turn is up. So we've already done that with science, and maybe you could chime in at this time.
That is correct, so I've reached out to high school, included Josh on that, just asked them to really look through what it is that they need, evaluate it, reach out to vendors, ask for copies, we do have documentation that as they get closer to the purchase, they'll fill out, we also have a curriculum oversight committee, so just like we met with this ELA curriculum, they will bring their materials to the curriculum oversight committee, and they will present on them, there will be conversation, follow-up of questions, and after that approval, I would then bring it to you.
Just remember, there are various steps in that process of approval, so you're getting approval from within your department, so the science department at the high school has that conversation, then they get approval from Josh, after they get approval from Josh, they go to curriculum oversight, which is a group of administration, board member or members, and they get approval there, and then after they get approval at curriculum oversight, that's when it arrives here. So there are two curriculum oversight meetings that occur, one that happens out at the tail end of the calendar year, those are new classes, and then when you get into April and May, you see curriculum orders such as this. So next, April, May, you're going to see 912, science, going through all those channels. Questions?
It's a long process.
Well, it's unfortunate that the, well, the, the length of the cycle, I guess, is what I'm making reference to, it's unfortunate that it's 10 years deep, because after 10 years, your resources are getting pretty, pretty old, and that's certainly true of reading language arts, which we just did, 10 years is lengthy, but we have to spread it out that far because we don't have enough money to do it all in every year, that would be way beyond our capacity to do it every year.
Next we have the first reading of the policy for a student representative.
Okay, what you see here, and Erin, you can certainly chime in, Erin is the, sort of the origin of the policy, she gathered some policies from other districts, where I sort of took an amalgam and put it together, again, this is a first reading, so there's no obligation to move beyond this in regards to action this evening. What it in essence does is it adds another person at that table over there, they're not a board member, they're not a voting member of the board, they weren't elected to be a voting member of the board, they would give a report, or be able to speak from a student perspective about issues of the day. And the process by which they would end up being there is first, they have interest in, in government and civic organization activity, they would be sort of selected or coached to be the right fit for the job by student council advisor Heidi Williamson and by Josh Gould, we would work with them to help them understand what it means to have appropriate communication at a board meeting, to understand the decorum and the processes of a board meeting, because they would be entirely new to it. So this is simply the first stab at a policy, and I will take feedback or questions if you have it, this is something we've never done before.
So I guess I'll just add that I've gone to several, I've gone to a couple of presentations on having a student board member, a student at your board meetings, and some school districts have more than one student, especially larger school districts, sometimes they try to have, you know, a couple of students, but anyway, just the value of having student input, and, you know, there's various ways that you can have student input in your district, and just to really feel like we are, we are valuing our students and, and hearing what they have to say and having them be involved. And so, so we, Sean and I met with Josh and Heidi and had a discussion maybe a month or so ago, and, and there's still some different ideas, I mean, I've heard from some school districts that it's hard to get a student to commit, and it's hard to get a student to, you know, regularly attend, you kind of have to, you know, be able to find the right person, here we did include an application, so that, so that, you know, one student, more than one student, several students could apply, and then, and then they would be, there would be one selected with, through the principal and the student council advisor. But Heidi and I, at our meeting, we also discussed the idea of having maybe a board member go to a student council meeting and be able to hear from the students there, and kind of having it be, you know, at their meeting and having us come, when one of us come and listen to their concerns there, so, so there's some different ideas, but I've heard from some districts and other school board members that they found it to be very helpful and beneficial, and that it's been a great experience for the student, and it's been great for the board to have a student be able to speak about, you know, student perspectives on different issues, so.
And those kids have gone to school here before, don't pin me down on the years of graduation, but I can think of two really good examples, Marco Uzarevich, who graduated, that has to be six, seven years ago or so, maybe even more, he works as a staffer for Tony Evers, and Madison Grimm, who is a little more recent, she works as a staffer for Tom Tiffany, I believe, so those are two kids that perhaps would have been perfect for this.
You could also use this as a disciplinary.
To send them here?
I'm making them go to the school board meeting.
If you show up late again, we're going to send you to the school board meeting.
Go to the board meeting.
No. Well, and it's, maybe it's too much of a commitment for one, to do all the meetings, if there is.
Maybe two or three interested, they just break it up and split it up.
I think with the path that the student council is going on right now, I think if you divide it up amongst multiple kids, you know, the thing is that these, this group of kids that we're talking about, they're already the ones that have some of the busiest schedules already, and whether it's, you know, jazz choir on Monday night, or their sports practice, or play practice, or musical practice, you know, I think if we spread them out, it would help.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if there's interest in it, it's a great tool, and it's, you know, we're here to serve our students, and it would be nice to hear from them if they have a representative that's interested in coming, or two, or something like that, I mean, it just, it would be nice to have something consistent, as, as these things play out from month to month, some of those issues don't just get dealt with once, so it would be nice to.
I think it's important to also realize, though, that, you know, one student's opinion doesn't necessarily speak for 490, and they're going to have differences in opinions, much like your own, children have their own opinions, you know, I think we would want to be careful in asking them to speak on behalf of the entire student body about how they feel about certain things, just given their nature.
Yeah, I think it would, they're a useful, it would be a more of a useful tool of, what is your experience, or how does this happen in your experience, or what kind of class is in your experience, it would be more about them talking from their perspective or their experience kind of a thing than to speaking for everybody else, so.
Yeah.
So you'll see this again next month, this is just the first reading.
Okay. Going to leave it as is, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can talk to, I've made a couple of changes, just with wording and stuff like that, that I thought might be helpful, but, but again, you know, even the idea of it, I, I do like the idea, and I've, like I said, I've heard some very positive things, but I'm also open to the idea of a school board member going to the student council meetings and, and kind of saying, you know, hey, we're interested in hearing what you have to say and what you're working on, in that capacity also, so I guess I'm kind of open to keep discussing it.
More to follow.
Okay. Next, there will be our referendum update.
Okay, each and every month, until the end of this deal, way back probably the end of 2024, you're going to hear about referendum, so, what you see here is a presentation on the latest and greatest, and updating where we stand. Now remember, some of the referendum requires a design, elementary, high school, we got to go through a design process, but some projects we can just take care of and knock out now, which is what we're trying to do. So, summer of 2022 projects, you'll see there, we've got a football concession stand, we're trying to patch that into the city septic, because right now it is not, which does create some interesting smells in and around that area when we have heavy activity like football games. So the, the way you read this slide in essence is the project, the location, which in this case is grounds, what the description is, and then lastly, who is selected as the contractor to do the work, in this case, it's SNF, and then there were two bids received, SNF being one of those two, and you can chime in anytime you want, I'm just going to run through the next five, and then I'll turn it over to you. Baseball field press box, per OSHA, we had to replace that, it was no longer a safe entity, if you were in it, you probably understand full well why. Mark Bottelson was selected, there were two bids received. The elementary school storm drain, we had to replace, underneath, pipes had broken, a pipe had broken, so we had to replace that, SNF is going to be the bidder that does that work out of two. HVAC controls, this was UHL did that work, they are the original company that did the installation, so it was a logical connection to have them come back and do that, and lastly, lighting here in this building, what was it, some 1,500 or so lights being replaced by Hunt?
Eleven, was it?
Eleven?
Eleven hundred.
Well, 1,500 maybe was someone's guess, so 1,100, there you go, they were the only bidder to bid in on that work, and since you're rolling here, I'll do the next four parking lots, the resurfing, surfacing of the parking lot, if you drove in today, you noticed it was better, it's not done, but it's better. Tarazol here in the Monarch did the parking lots, Tarazol, the grind and refinish there, that's floor fixers, there were four bids received. Lighting, middle school, that's the replacement of the LED, that's Hunt again, and then lastly, cooling tower, Harris was the company, it's an addendum to the existing contract, so those nine, I'm not sure if you have any questions, Joe, Keith, myself, George, Ryan, and Andy did a tour of the district, well, not all of the district, the intermediate school and the middle school last week, so they saw some of the sites firsthand, you can certainly chime in, too, or George, you can, but those are the nine that we have bid out.
I think that's why Andy's not here, he was nervous we were going to take him on the roof again.
Took him on the roof?
Maybe, we did, that was as far as he made it.
Yeah. That was it.
He exited.
And he got busy.
Is he still up there?
He's not still up there.
Excited to get down, I'll tell you that.
It's like a bad episode of The Hangover, he's still up on the roof. So the HVAC controls, that was done at the intermediate school, then?
Both schools will have upgrades to the, the controls, with the new. Both schools will have upgrades to the controls. With the new heat pumps, the heat pumps that are there now, actually outside, they have the original controllers from 1992 in them. So we've gone a lot of, there's been a lot of software upgrades on what you can do with the system. And I've been working with Clint over the last couple of years. I've been hanging on, because I don't like to reinvent the wheel, but they're not supporting either one of the packages I have now. So if it goes down, then I'm begging Clint to figure out a way to get me going again. So I was hoping to be able to make those controllers last as long as the heat pumps, and I was able to do that. So here, it's not the entire system. It's, this building was set up with pneumatic controls, and we replaced those. Air doesn't talk, so to be able to see what's going on with the, with the system, we put a digital control package in. Some of it was, that was there, was still working. The functionality was different than the new part, and again, it was just time to bring everything back up on the same level.
I think there is a couple notes I took down was, out of all those, for what was budgeted, we were, we came in at $278,000 under, I think that's huge. And then also, I just wrote down, for the fluorescent lighting, replacing those LEDs will also save some money on rebates and whatnot for them.
So 275-ish, 278, over nine bids worth of work. The other cost savings, please remember that we went double the life expectancy of some of the projects. For instance, the capacity of those heat pumps at the middle school is supposed to be 15 years shelf life. They're in year 30, they're original. It's 1992 building, it's 2022. That's a huge saving in and of itself. That's $800,000 savings or more.
Yeah, those, if you drive by and you wanna look at some of those heat pumps, they look like calico cats because of the different colors of new fans or new motors. We've, we just didn't wanna let go, and just kept fixing them and making them work. But I was told I had to.
You had to let go.
I had to let go.
Yeah.
So that's where we add through nine projects. Other questions?
Well, the only thing I'd add to that is, we are well over $200,000 under the budgeted costs that we had. But that'll probably go away sometime soon.
Yeah, it helps that we're running them in-house. There's no soft cost involves. I was able to talk the architect and the construction management firm to allow me to, to run it in-house. There was a number of different reasons. A big one was, this building's, it's got a lot of work going on right now, and if we were to try and do that next year, I don't know where we would have summer school, because that elementary's gonna be a mess once they start in over there. So what we're getting done here should allow for summer school to happen, and like I say, K and LHB, they were gracious enough to say, if you wanna do it, do it.
Yeah. Yeah, good savings for us.
Thank you.
So there are other items here. SR3, this is old news in some ways, approved many months ago. HVAC controls, that was a Harris bid. And heat pumps, as you know, we had two bids, and the Harris bid that we selected is some $300,000 less than the other. So we came out ahead, and further, Harris is doing a fantastic job. They worked miracles at the elementary, and they're doing it again. Fund 46, remember the service road, the east-west down the middle service road with some rather impressive potholes. That was not a referendum project. That is Fund 46, $180,000 put aside by this district five years ago, which became available in the fall of 2021. That is what we use that money for. We have a plan for north-south. It just doesn't have as many issues, because it doesn't receive as much traffic, but it will soon need to be replaced as well. So we still have money left over in Fund 46 to do that in the future. You don't have to use it at five years, you just simply can't touch it until five years. So.
Can I ask about the sidewalk that runs next to the?
Yes.
East-west road? That's kind of terrible?
It is kind of terrible.
Will that, I know they're gonna be tearing up stuff when they do all the elementary work.
That wouldn't be something that would be torn out, but it can be in the future. Our next step in this process is to add better signage on that road, because it's not implicit where you're supposed to walk if you're coming from the intermediate school and middle school to the elementary school. And no offense to intermediate school and middle school kids, they don't always make the best decisions on how they walk to and from. And in this case, they don't really do the squared off, they sort of do a diagonal, and parents sort of play frogger with the traffic and get where they need to go. So we need to add some signage. But that portion is not scheduled to be done. But we can in the future.
We need to at some point address that sidewalk, because it's.
What I think we need to do right now, from a safety standpoint, we need to better demarcate where vehicular traffic is and foot traffic is, because by the football field, there isn't any separation of the two.
And how do we plan on doing it? Because this was all paved with no lines, no anything. So how are we gonna plan on doing that?
Well, the curb stops we've used at the high school have been enormously successful, and a curb stop isn't gonna completely stop a moving vehicle, but it's certainly gonna help. Because right now, there's nothing stopping any of it all.
And what about like sidewalks being, or crosswalks being painted in and those kinds of things?
All of that's set to be done after we get done with the paving itself, and Ryan.
And is our building and grounds guys taking care of that ourselves?
Not ourselves, but we're gonna get that contracted out.
Okay.
I worked with them last week, and we, or another thing I was gonna add was a fog line to make that road a different entry, because right now, people come on that corner and they stay in the parking spots before they realize, oh crap, the road's over here. So I think the fog line, I was gonna have them add that in for sure.
So more signage and more markings on the road, so we can have a better chance at making that safer.
Oh, that's good. And it was speedy, too. Like I came in the morning, and it was ripped up, and I came back later, and it was paved.
Yeah, it worked quick. So that's Fund 46. Bidding process, please know, we're always putting bids out. We put that in the free press, they're out there for two weeks, and we also use BidQuest. So the process is not us simply getting those in the mail and only certain people knew about them. It has to be out there for public consumption. There has to be a date at which it ends, there has to be a public opening of bids, and anyone that bids in can come watch all of the bids be open. That's public knowledge, never any secret. And we've had people come in and do just that on one of these projects. So that's the bid process. Here are some show and tell pictures. George, perhaps you can walk through these pictures, they're fun.
Yeah, this, the epoxy repair needed is, in this building, there's five or six rooms, I believe. Today, I might have sent you something that that company said that they were able to fit us in. So that didn't make the earlier slide, but we should be able to get some of that stuff fixed. They put about a three or four-foot patch around there. I'm not a big fan of epoxy flooring, and I'll go on record to say it, but that's what we're stuck with. So we gotta repair it. It just gets worse as water gets underneath there. Here's some of the old controls here in this building. And then this is supposed to be clear glycol, and it looks like chocolate milk or, or coffee. That's why there's a couple holes here. We're filling, draining, filling, draining, flushing, draining, to try and clear it back up. The boiler issue we had last fall caused some issues with the acidity in the closed loop, and it wreaked havoc on the pipes. So we don't wanna go through this again. So that's what's going on around the building. Roof, I wish Andy was here, we'd give a little test.
PTSD.
Every curb that comes through the roof, the leaks have started in this building over the last couple of years. It's firestone roof. The actual membrane of the roof is okay, but it does what every other rubber roof does, it shrinks. What it does is it pulls away from the walls. So that's along the gym, pulls away, they cut it, relaxed it, had a piece in. We did about 350 feet up there. So there was a lot of what was going on there. That never leaked yet, because it hadn't fully tore away from the T-bar. But right in here, this, these patches or these corners that they put on the curbs is made of a different material, and it's not very good. I don't know how old the building is now, '02, so.
You're talking intermediate, it's 20?
Yeah, 20 years. So in 20 years, this stuff basically disintegrates where you can just poke your hole, your finger right through it. So every protrusion through the roof, we put a new corner on.
Which really isn't any different than shingles. I mean, those things are only good for 20 years, too. So, you know, it's, it's a roof in Wisconsin, so.
Yeah. There is piles and piles, 1,100 lights worth of old lighting going out and new lighting going in. And it'll be about the same for the middle school, minus the gym lights we were done a couple of years ago. Here are those heat pumps, if you wanna go out and grab some capacitors or whatever you'd like.
So did they take this stuff away, too? Is this all included in the price of, they take this away and either recycle it or regenerate, whatever they're gonna do with it?
Yeah. If this was as simple as throwing in a dumpster and collecting money on the, on the metal, we would do it. These are full of refrigerant.
Right.
So luckily, our 22 is worth enough money that a company is not gonna charge anything, but they will vacuum the 22 out, clean it up, and it'll be a wash on, I mean, I think that they would, they'd have to make some money. But out of sight, out of mind for us. And the other, I mean, I may have been able to try and go out and find somebody I've worked with, but the second somebody doesn't handle that refrigeration correctly, and we get blamed for the ozone, I don't wanna be on that end of it. So there's number 46 up there, down the hall from Mr. Benson.
All right. Thanks, George.
Yeah.
A little bit different topic within the same presentation. Approximately two weeks or so ago, received word from Baird Financial that we did successfully lock in an interest rate for our borrowing. And you'll see there, the interest rate was 3.64%. Our estimate on all of our referendum materials was 3.25% to 3.75%. Interest rates escalated in the days following the passage of the referendum, but that was far beyond our control. You know, interest rates are a topic of the day right now. That changes the estimated tax impact from 186 to 179. So that would change from $186 for every $100,000 of home to 179. So our estimations, with the help of Baird Financial, were pretty accurate, and we came slightly under, which is always a good thing. And then lastly.
I was just gonna say, but, but when we were looking at that form, I can pull it up, but it's not necessarily, because isn't it higher at the beginning, the first few years, and then it drops?
Yes. The borrowing is higher at the beginning, and it drops later.
Just so the public is aware that it's not going to be 179 consistently for all of the years.
Not for 21, not for 20 years, no.
Right. It's gonna vary. So.
Correct.
Just so the public to be aware of that.
The projected timeline, you've seen this before. We're in the process of putting together designs, meeting with elementary, soon high school staff. Once the design options are complete, you're going to see the elementary here first. Our hope is to bring them in July, so you can see the two options that we're looking at. If not July, it'll be August. The only thing that would move it to August is if it isn't done and estimated the cost. So we'd have to wait until August to do that. But hopefully, once we've got all of that done for elementary and high school, then we get into the bidding process out in November, bid deadline in December, going ahead and entering into contracts, December, January, February, and then construction begins in the spring, summer of '23, and runs through the end of the summer 2024. So that's the timeline as it stands. Any questions for me?
Lots of projects.
Yes, there are.
Yeah, well needed and glad to be doing them. With that, we'll go to the Safety and Securities meeting.
Okay. Well, certainly the incident in Uvalde, Texas moved to the forefront, if it wasn't already, in the forefront of school officials. We are a school system with a crisis plan. Josh Gould is our, in essence, the curator of that plan. We met as a board, administrative team, district team, local police, and people services, meaning guidance counselors and school psychs. We had to have 25, maybe a few more people in the room the first Tuesday after school recessed. The plan, the agenda on that day, in essence, was what is our procedure for a lockdown, where you're remaining in place, and what is our procedure for an evacuation, which means you, your building, or the whole district is leaving and going elsewhere due to a threat, which could be an armed intruder. In combination with that, we engaged with the Amory Police about what would be your processes when you arrived here? What would you do, and what would you need of us? That's where the conversation ended. We are meeting again next week with the same group of people, and the topic of the day is going to be communication. What is it that we can do in-house to communicate with our staff and our kids without having to be physically with them in the room to tell them, whether that be through PAs, through cell phones, through internet, through clocks, whatever way we can communicate with them? And just as importantly, what can we do to communicate with folks that are not physically on school site and premises, like the police, who have, by the time a situation occurred, I'm assuming have amassed in and around the school district, beginning with the Amory Police, and then I'm assuming closely thereafter by Polk County and other neighboring communities. So how can we help them communicate with us and us with them? And there are a lot of things that we were able to do. So we're actually gonna see in time some of the things we can do, like send messages across the digital clocks, change the clocks in various ways that have certain messages, and also provide access to all of the security cameras for our Amory Police friends who would show up in an event of a tragedy such as this. So those, that's the agenda for July, and if we need further conversation, we'll do that. And then in August, we're gonna be here to present to the public what it is our plan, if you will, is, so our parents can know what we're going to do. Now, we can't give you all the details of our plan, because we certainly don't want to let folks know that we do bad things, what exactly were our rally points on, and that kind of thing. But we want to make sure that folks know that we're on task with what we are seeking to do to address armed intruders and other various types of topics. All five board members were there, and I'm gonna turn it over to them if they have any thoughts to share from the last meeting here, from the next one we're gonna have here in the week plus.
I think our next meeting in communication is probably the most important, when you can communicate from a student seeing something, to telling staff, to, you know, social media events that are alerting things that can happen. It's pretty broad. I don't know how you can cover all the bases, but.
Well, I'm not here to say anything about any particular school shooting episode that's ever occurred. I'm not an expert in that area. All I know, based on the research, is the better communication systems you have, the increased chance you have on saving life. And I know that Joe has got specialized training as a law enforcement person, and actually does presentations on these types of things, and perhaps he can elaborate on that, the importance of that communication piece. I'm gonna put you on the spot, Joe, you know your best.
No, it's, but that's where it always breaks down, and that's the hardest part of any of our issues, is communication. No, I, I think it was a great start. And, you know, and again, we just gotta pick up pieces where we were at and move forward. And like, I'm happy to hear that people were very interested. And yeah, I just, I wanna continue forward with it.
Yeah, it's a sad, it's a sad episode that brings it to the forefront once again, but I mean, it's reality. Here we are. So we'll meet again here, I think it's the sixth, the Wednesday after the fourth.
Yeah, I guess I'll say that this is something that we've talked about several times in my tenure on the board here. Something that is always on my mind of things that we can do better to secure our schools. Things are, seem to be progressing at a, at a more rapid rate. We start to hear about these things more and more. It's a total package of things that we can do, and not just our, our policies that we're looking at shoring up, but things that we're doing inside the school on a day-to-day basis of helping kids. but things that we're doing inside the school on a day-to-day basis of helping kids, creating an environment where kids feel heard, respected, not marginalized. And it's gonna take a lot of work. It's gonna take work from everybody. And the more community involvement that we can have surrounding these conversations will help us moving forward to do that really important work. I thought that we started a really great step in the right direction the day that we had the meeting. And I'm looking forward to getting back at the really important work that needs to continue on July 6th. And these issues matter, and they're huge, and it's important, and we need to put in the work. And this board is committed to doing that, and the people that were in that room are committed to doing that work. I thought it was, I thought there was a lot of progress that came there.
Certainly a good start. We got a ways to go, but a good start on a disturbing topic, I guess.
Yeah. Well, Clint, you've been patient. But you will be when you're begging for money, won't you?
I always beg for money when I'm up here.
Yeah, I know. Consistently.
At least he's consistent.
So we have a network infrastructure refresh proposal. Clint and I have talked a bunch of times since I arrived in this office back in 2019. It's unfortunately an ongoing topic, and the needs change and the timelines change because the technology changes and the needs change. So he's here, not begging for money. He's here because we need to upgrade what we have.
It's time.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Nice way to sugarcoat that.
I'm gonna turn it over to you, Clint, and you can walk us through what you got here.
I was just here tonight to ask for your approval to move forward with the network infrastructure refresh. The last time we did this was in 2016, so six years ago. And of that hardware, we purchased it during that refresh, it's all into life. So basically, we're gonna quit selling it, they're done selling it now. And in October, they will no longer release updates, security updates for the hardware. So you will be vulnerable after October to any attacks. It'd have to come from inside and couldn't, well, I should say that different. Mostly it actually would have to come from the inside, not the outside, but. That proposal we did last year, we were doing that with E-Rate, or no, five, six years ago, it was through E-Rate. And E-Rate covered a good chunk of that. It was like, I want to say it was three quarters of the cost of the project back then. The funding for E-Rate fluctuates every five years, and it varies on what they'll give you as an allowance. But that year, they covered about three quarters of the cost of the project. This project, we would replace the core switches between buildings, which are the, they communicate building to building and to the internet. So we would replace them, and we would replace the internal switches, which communicate laptops to laptops or to cameras or to time clocks or, it's all the internal communication. And then we would replace the district-wide wireless, which is end-of-date next year, end of life. So that one's coming to end of life as well. And then the only thing we'd be adding is wireless to the baseball field and the softball field, which has been requested by some staff already, so I threw that in there as well. And since this is an E-Rate project, we have to throw it out, do a 470 on it. And it's sitting on the internet for 30 days, and anybody in the nation can bid on it. And we received one bid that met all our requests, and it was our current, current engineers, we were with Heartland Business Systems. They're the ones that bid it to the full, everything we asked for. And the total cost of the project came in at $380,123.06. With our current E-Rate reimbursement, they would reimburse us $209,976.55. So our responsibility would be $170,147.11. How that works is a project would get done, we'd get an invoice from Heartland, we have to pay the full invoice, and then we submit the invoices to E-Rate, and then they, a month, two months, three months, depending on how busy they are, then we get reimbursed. The downfall of the whole thing is everything's a year out. Hardware is literally a year out right now at the earliest. So if I order it today, we won't see it until next July. It's a question mark which budget year, I wonder. '22, '23 at the end, or '23, '24 at the beginning? So that's the, I don't know that answer right now. But we would get the reimbursement amount.
It's a budgeted expense in '22, '23. If it doesn't happen, then it'll be '23, '24. We just don't know that timeline because we're held hostage to E-Rate.
I purchased some APs, I ordered some APs last April. Last week I canceled them because they weren't supposed to be here until September at the earliest, so it's ugly.
And the cost wouldn't change if that was?
No, we're locked in. We'll be locked into the price. We're locked into the E-Rate percentage we get, so that won't change either. That gets a little confusing, so I'd rather not explain that.
And then, like, the internal switches, the hard wiring stuff, to communicate between building to building, I guess it kind of is a piggyback off of what we were just talking about with security, because of the communication that we need that ability to communicate within the buildings. We kind of talked this, that we could communicate from one building to another, not where necessarily the emergency is happening, correct? So without these, we wouldn't be able to necessarily.
We can do that now. It's just that these are coming into life, what we currently have.
Right. But I mean, I guess that's a very necessary component of having those, right?
Absolutely, yep.
This is basically the latest and greatest of what we have today that's going away.
Yeah, new pro calls, new, new everything.
Yeah.
Latest and greatest.
All right. Well, do we have a motion to accept the bid and payment from Heartland Business Systems?
I'll make a motion for the technology purchase.
Second, Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Clint.
On to the next.
All about waiting around for just those couple of minutes.
No matter what you say, don't say new bus when you get to the next topic, because there's no such thing anymore. It's a blast that you all were gracious enough to get on behalf of the district to arrive to think, what was it, the second or third, the last day of school, right?
31st, yeah.
Well, at least it made it here.
It made it before we got to school, 31st of May. So I don't know that we're any further along on supply chain now, but here we are.
I'm assuming what we talked about is gonna be at least a year, except for when we order it, till we get it. Could change, could be worse, could be better.
Well, you've been offered to go get it. They didn't want that.
Oh, they weren't ready on their end.
That's why they didn't want that.
Yeah.
They needed time.
So here are your bus quotes from four different vendors. And the highlighted bus that you see there is your recommendation. Perhaps you could, go ahead.
So our last bus was 105-345, the one we just received. And the only thing that has added to this was a rear backup camera and a stainless steel stepwell. So roughly $1,600 and $1,000 with that rear backup camera, which I think is a must. You can't see behind those buses when you're backing. The stepwells, we have to replace, almost all our buses, we had to completely rebuild all the stepwells because the rust is, so the stainless one would.
So what you're saying, it didn't add any extravagant new features. It's a matter of the cost is not 137 where it was 105.
Correct. And the big thing in this, the one that I highlighted, the difference is it's air ride in the front. We're having a lot of issues with our leaf springs as they age. They're cracking, they become DOT, so we have to replace them. Leaf springs are $1,000 for the spring, plus about that in labor to do it. Whereas an airbag is $100, $150, and quicker to do. They ride nicer, they're smoother. I think it'd be worth it. The buses we do have do have rear air than some of our newer ones, and it helps a lot as far as the ride. They're all good buses. They're all spec'd almost exactly the same, apples to apples. Only one difference, I just threw one on the bottom there, 147, that's an activity-style bus slash route bus, so it'd have underbelly storage. So for the sports teams that go some distance or have a lot of gear, wouldn't have to send vans, and the coaches could ride in the bus like they prefer. So I thought I'd throw it out there. It's about $10,000 more and maybe something we could look at in the future.
So I was just talking to somebody today. They had asked about bus prices, and I said I thought our last one was like $105,000, $110,000. So I was right.
You were right.
And so they went up, you know, 25, $30,000, which significant. I guess probably right in line with all other vehicle prices, I guess, so.
I did one similar to this one at the end of February, because I was thinking about, maybe we could see if we could order it earlier. And it was $127-ish, so I mean, in that short amount of time, it went up another $10,000.
Would this be our only bus with a rear backup cam?
I added it to this one we just received. So this price of 105-345 did.
So this would be our second bus?
Yeah.
So that's all. We only have two buses with rear backup cams?
And I, they all should have my.
So I guess I'm good, that's gonna be my next question. Is there a way to aftermarket put rear backup cams on the existing fleet?
Yes.
And do you know what the cost of that is off the top of your head?
Roughly $1,500, $1,600.
Per bus?
Per bus.
And would that work be done in-house, or do we need somebody to come in and do that?
They come out and do it.
And how many buses do we have?
We have, depends on if we need the spares or not, which we have 14 route buses. I want, I would like all of them to have it for sure, and then maybe two or three of the spares.
And you say you have 14 route buses, but then two would have cams already, so that would put that down to 12, that we would absolutely need to outfit with them.
Right.
What's our plan for getting new buses?
The plan is we do one a year?
Yeah.
If, I mean, you never have to do a bus, but then you end up doing three or four at one time, and then because of the issue, it's one a year typically. So the rearview cameras for all of them, you're looking at about 20, close to 22, $25,000 to do that?
Yep. And then I did get approval on the DNR grant, which would be, I think it was like $25,000 I will get back from this bus we just purchased. So that will help offset some of the cost, but.
Gee, $25,000 back off of the purchase of this bus?
The one we just received.
Received.
As long as I brought up to Amory, I was salvage, and we put a hole in the block, we cut the frame, so if we disable it, the DNR gives us a grant back.
Which would.
Clean diesel grant.
Almost cover the cost.
Almost. It would.
Outfitting buses.
Just gotta let Andy let me put it there.
Just a question about buses and their, each of them. And sometimes when I think of diesels, I think like the really good diesels were before DEF. Did you have problems with a bunch of DEF in the last, I mean, few buses?
Yeah, yeah, we had some major issues with DEF freezing year before I started. But I didn't have any problems this year. I mean, we had some pretty cold spells. But we are lucky, all our buses are inside. They're heated, but their inside helps significantly.
That was just a matter of being able to get DEF.
I think part of it was COVID. The buses weren't running for a long time, so then they were, the garage just got just as cold. Yeah, that's what the guy at the salvage yard, I had people coming up when we were putting a hole in the block, they're mad because they wanted that motor. Because it's just a good motor, and then no emissions or nothing on it, but it's dirty.
Yeah. And all of our buses run DEF now?
No.
No.
No?
Thank goodness, we still got some that'll start in the cold and go.
Yeah, we have some old buses and the spares are in pretty good shape, and they run really well. And we were really lucky in some of these cases, like when we had the DEF nozzle shortage, we had a bus sitting for four months, brand-new bus, at like 12,000 miles, I'm just sitting, because we couldn't get a nozzle. And then we were running our old spare, keep this going.
Okay. Do we have a motion to purchase that bus? Order it, I should say.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we order the bus from, I guess, Wisconsin Bus Sales.
The highlighted?
The highlighted one, yeah. 137-695, that's the one you'd recommend, right?
Correct.
So, yep.
I'll second it.
Second, Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. There we go.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Have a great night.
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our WIAA membership renewal.
I'm here on behalf of Jeff Fern in the athletic department, and congratulations to Jeff Fern, a father less than a week old. I'm sure he's being indoctrinated on fatherhood and changing a diaper as we speak. He changed his first one. There's many more to come. Did you share it out with him?
Don't want to break his spirits all at one time.
Well, this is easy. It's been preparing him all year for this. It's always more fun when they go to solid food, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So with the WIAA membership renewal, nothing's changed from when you did this last time around. There are two co-ops that we are involved in, both of which are hockey. We are the contact, meaning we are the point person for the boys' hockey. We are not the point contact for girls' hockey, that's Somerset. So everything else remains the same. In order to play WIAA sports, you have to have a membership renewal. So this is sort of one of those non-negotiables that you sort of almost got to approve. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, do we have a motion for renewing the WIAA membership?
Pretty simple. I will make a motion to approve the WIAA membership.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Aaron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. There we go. Next is our student accident insurance renewal.
We use student accident insurance renewal. Student Assurance Services is the vendor. You'll see some longitudinal data going back 2015, '16, so what's that, nine years worth? Eight years, because we really have a tremendous amount of data that's complete for this year, this coming year. So the premium that you would have for each of those years is listed there. The benefits paid, the number of claims. Thankfully, we've had fewer claims in recent years. And then your loss percentage is listed there. So student accident assurance is what we use in the event of unforeseen circumstances with kids and injuries. I mean, in my years at the high school, and Josh has probably added to the list since, people are dropping dumbbells on their feet and all kinds of things happening, which doesn't end well if you do that, by the way.
Yeah, yep.
So.
Well, I see the premium stayed the same?
Yes.
So do we have a motion to renew that insurance?
So moved.
Aaron, second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. There we go. Some are quicker. See how that works, Clint? Some are a little quicker. All right, next up, Lead Home Insurance Renewal.
Okay, well, this is a little more complicated than it has been in the past, since we have a third portion of this. Let's do the easy stuff first, I gather. Not easy in price tag, but easy in that you've seen it before. So the 21-22 premium for each of the itemized items that you see there, listed out. And then you see the 22-23 premium. You'll see two items that have increased in the amount. The property increased by some $27,000. The property is increased because now you are covering all assets in the entire district. It is not a result of having purchased 35 acres. What we had covered in the past is not 100%, but rather about 60% to 70% of the assets in the district. So if you had, Siren had a massive tornado, that's got to be near 20 years ago now, wiped out basically the whole town. If we had one of those, this would cover us for the entire, all of the assets in the district. The other is the idea of workman's comp, which you see off the bottom, a little further down, Becky. The workman's comp claims, we have three sizable claims, all in excess of $30,000 to $40,000, and that increased our premium there. In two of the three were actually for, or all three, I should say, were for adults, two of which work in the district and one does not. I shouldn't say, all three were for folks that worked in the district. One was involving a kid involved in a situation. So all of those two items together resulted in a $46,000 premium increase. Now, if you're interested in bringing an amount down, you simply don't ensure all 100%. You can do that. The recommendation from Lead Home is to not do that, but rather to ensure all of our assets. But again, that's your discretion. So that's part one. There are two other parts. You'll see on the next page, the items listed out for property, for general liability, and for workers' comp, there isn't anything really noteworthy there, other than the blanket building coverage. You see sixty-eight million as opposed to ninety-two million. If you're covering ninety-two million dollars in assets, you're gonna pay a, a bigger premium, in essence, is what that means. The second part is the proposal for Amory School District, the American Risk Management Resources policy. You'll see a one, two, and a three-year policy. This is for pollution, which is what we adopted not so long ago in regards to mold. So, that's the second part of this policy. Depends on whether you want to do one, two, or three years. And then the third is entirely new, and Clint's gonna help us with that, and that is the cyber insurance. We haven't had cyber insurance thus far, and the reason we haven't is because we haven't really needed it, but we really do now. Two districts in the state of Wisconsin, and this isn't anything that's top secret, Janesville and Nina, both have had cybersecurity episodes, which have shut their entire technology down. In Janesville case, well in excess of a month, in Nina, almost a month. Meaning you have zero access to your technology, in essence, it's being held for ransom. So this is a policy that would help us mitigate that if it occurred, and it could. So, it's my recommendation that you adopt this policy, which will cover us. Now, the reason you're not seeing multiple bids here, you're seeing just cowbell, is because we don't have everything in regards to our cybersecurity in-house fully in place yet in order to get other bids. Cowbells, who we have to go with if you're not a hundred percent there, most districts aren't a hundred percent there. So it's not like we've been derelict in duty. We simply haven't gotten all the way there. And Clint can talk to us about what it is we yet need to do in order to get other bidders, and if we get other bidders, we can probably bring this price take down. But for right now, the price take is as it's listed there, at eleven thousand. So that's the third prong of this. And I know I gave you a lot of info, so please ask questions if you have them.
Are there more bids?
This is the only bid, uh, for, for all of this, or, or just for the cybersecurity?
Yeah, I, so, yeah, you said we went up forty-six thousand dollars, did?
There are bids in regards to the insurance package as a whole, no. Lead Home is who we've worked with for probably thirty years plus. But no, there aren't. So we can get more bids. The trick is July one is when this begins, so it's, yeah. That's tru, that's trouble.
Well, we can't get more bids.
Not at this point, no.
Yeah, no, I know, if I can remember seriously right, because Jim talked to us about this, and Tricor is, is, he's like an independent insurance agency, and Tricor is one that's built kind of for school districts and that to go to. We did bid this a while ago, and it was like a, quite a gap, to try and go to just a company. And that's where they pool this into this Tricor company, as far as.
Seems to me we bid this, it's been eight, ten years ago, maybe.
Yeah.
And Lead Home was still, um, at that time, I think significantly.
Yeah.
Less, and so.
If you went with Lead Home, you get two things. One, I think you're gonna get the best premium, and second, you're gonna get the best service. I literally could be, from the moment of an issue arising, sitting in front of Jim Lead Home in five minutes and having a conversation, because it's happened within the last month. And you're gonna get the customer service of someone that's local. But we certainly can bid it out in the future if that's what you would like us to do.
Now, is there such a thing, um, and I was told this before, not by you, but by somebody else, that if, once you start bidding out your school insurances, and you're asking for, um, bids on them, does that take our rating down?
Doesn't take your rating down, but you're not gonna get as good of a premium, because that word's gonna certainly travel fast.
I guess that's what I, yeah, right? It affects the premium overall at some point.
I wonder if you're wandering into health insurance, because when you bid out that, then your experience rating is exposed.
All of it.
Right.
Yeah, property or health insurance, same thing.
But I know with health insurance, that's, that's the key there, is then, you know, your experience rating is out there, and then they bid that accordingly.
I think that plays a bigger role in health insurance.
But to your point, Joe, this can be bid out to more than one.
Yeah.
In the future, if we want to do that, we can. There's nothing prohibiting.
I would really like to see the same type, type of bidding process, I mean, because, I mean.
I think we only got one other bid at that time.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, there just isn't that many companies that bid all the stuff that we've got in this package.
So what we'll do is we'll start this process earlier, and we won't have a timeline upon us like we do now, so we'll do it in May as opposed to June, and we'll see who else wants to bid on the work. I'm obligated to let Jim know that we'll do that, but it's up to them to determine whatever their premium will be. I don't know what they'll say about.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that if there's competition, maybe that forty-six thousand dollars will.
Maybe so.
A little bit.
Maybe so.
It can, yeah.
Never know.
And then, and then if we choose, though, then that insurance company, um, and then they raise their prices too, then, then we're back to the board, then if you're shopping, I think that, I guess that was the point, then if you're shopping around every year, or every two years, or you're switching, then that affects your.
Yeah.
Premiums, right?
Those companies are smart.
And I'm not saying that that's not a good idea to do that, I'm just saying that those are consequences that we could face doing that as well, yes.
We need to make sure we have, you know, stake-to-stake bids also.
Yep, yeah, I think it's.
I wanna say the last.
I've said that before, yeah.
The last time we did it, I think Jim Lead Home bid it with two different companies.
Oh, maybe.
I think that he did it that way.
I'll ask Jim.
Yeah.
Oh, I think you're right about that.
He would remember it, he's got a pretty good memory of it.
Couple of years ago, yes, I think you're right, I might have that in our stuff.
He did that for us, and just said, hey, here we got, you know, another company, because, you know, there's very few that bid on school.
Let's talk about the cybersecurity for a moment, because this is entirely new. What does this eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollar price tag do for us, Clint? In broad sense, what would it protect us from, what would not protect us from, but what would it help us with if in fact we had a cybersecurity issue?
Well, you've heard of ransomware, I would imagine, it's all over the place. They're, they're attacking schools left and right. And for some reason, we're easy prey. Um, so this will cover ransomware, it'll cover security breaches, it'll cover, um, if somebody goes down a rabbit hole and gets caught giving money to somebody they're not supposed to, social engineering. Um, it'll cover a lot of things. And this, this policy is the only one that he could find that would cover us because we don't meet this criteria at all these companies that you have to be at. And the criteria is you have to have multi-factor authentication for all your users, and that's that USB key you have right there. That's for multi-factor authentication. And we will be activating that for all staff July one, so that we'll be done there. The question mark, I don't know yet, is if we have to do students or not. I'm not sure about that, and if it is, I don't know how we're gonna do students, but. Then there's endpoint security, which we're, should have that done this summer. Uh, training, we, you have to provide training with staff, we can't do that till August, until people are here. And then there's endpoint security, no, I already said that. Then there's, uh, cloud backups, where you have to have all your backups in the cloud. And we already do that. So we're, we're close, but we're not completely, so he couldn't, they won't even touch you unless you're a hundred percent with all these requirements, so they wouldn't even touch us. We gotta use these guys for a year at least, and then get some bids again next year. Um, and one of the things that I've done over the past, um, two years now, what I've been talking to Sean with, is we've flooded our production servers in the cloud, so they're not in-house. So if somebody in-house clicks on that bad link and encrypts everything in our network, we're ninety-five percent safe. Our data's safe, our Skyward Power School, financial and student information, because I have it out with the vendor rather than in-house. I feel a lot more comfortable with it on their side than our side, because I rely on the end users here. I can't control an end user from.
Based on our phishing expeditions in district, our end users were not safe. And further, based on the amount of email, I counted on Friday, I got nine different emails that, of things that I had no idea that I signed up for that I'm supposed to go and investigate, that I just deleted just on the name of the email.
How much money did you get? The people wanted to send you?
All kinds of stuff. I don't know, what's going on?
They may get some phishing expeditions from us as well, so.
So it's only a matter.
The utility that does that.
It's a matter of when, not if. So, I, this is the price of doing business in my mind to add this.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I mean, it's not fun to spend money on this, but I think it's a reality that.
And our vendor, our, uh, one, our vendor says the minimum seven hundred and fifty thousand coverage for a district of size. It's a minimum.
And this covers a million.
This is a million, yeah.
So, I see the ransom payment that they cover here is five hundred thousand. So what if they're asking for two million to unlock your stuff?
Depending on how far they went, I wouldn't even pay them. We'd be done for a couple of days.
Right.
Because they're just for having everything offsite, and then we'd do all the cloud backups. It's just a matter of having the engineers come in and get everything back up right away. But I don't want to say we don't need it. I don't want to say that.
And then that costs, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, then we have to pay.
Yeah.
Out of district pocket, in addition to the premiums.
Correct.
It's the technology fund that comes out. Right?
E-rate.
Yeah. I don't think so.
But yeah, Janesville, yeah, a month, I don't want to see that. That's just, and they, I, I believe they had the insurance, I'm not positive on that. But yeah, they got hit hard. And now they're all of a sudden doing all this stuff to cut me legit, to be at the requirement, they weren't at the requirements beforehand.
And obviously, you have to do all this stuff to meet the requirements, because otherwise you're too much of a risk for an insurance to take you on.
Yeah, they would. He said that a lot of the insurance companies are dumping schools, they don't want them, they don't even deal with them, because it's such a liability.
Yeah.
So this is the only one that covers now where we're at, and then in a year, we can start searching for some different ones.
Now, with all of this stuff backed up, that they're actually requiring to do, that brings down our threat though as well, right? It brings down us being a target.
No, it never brings on the target. It brings down what they're gonna encrypt that we can't get back.
Okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't.
It doesn't stop it.
Or make it harder for them to.
No, and it's, it always ends down, it always comes down to the end user most, nine times out of ten, it's the end user that.
Right.
Doesn't stop it, but it would minimize it.
No, well, it would minimize.
The impact.
The outcome, yeah. But they're getting more sophisticated every day, so who knows?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And the, so basically, the, the increase, um, in the premium to Tricor is really due to the fact we're covering more property.
And workman's comp.
Yeah, and workman's comp, okay, yep. And then the, the cowbell is, what, eleven thousand something, eleven, twelve thousand, so.
And then this American Risk Management is specifically for mold?
All pollutants.
Okay.
Which, that would be one. I would advise that we continue to do that, at least until the referendum is finished, because when they unearth all that is the high school. I don't, I don't have any idea what's gonna be found there.
And that's why we drafted that to begin with, so.
Because you can't do it after you find something at the high school, and the cost of mitigating that situation could be exorbitant. So once the high school and elementary project's done, because again, those buildings are forty and fifty years old, then you can do away with it probably more safely, because this building is not gonna have issues, and the middle school probably is not going to.
I remember doing this before, and so I'm wondering, did we do the three-year last time, and that's why it's up here again?
Yes.
I would say, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. So we're looking at the premium increase of two forty-four, plus the cowbell at eleven, and.
Yes.
The mold at, uh, almost sixteen.
Yes.
And the sixteen, that's for three years, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if we went that way, yeah, for three years.
So roughly fifty-three hundred bucks a year.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Right. I would make a motion that we accept the, uh, Lead Home Insurance Renewal Proposal.
Including all three.
With all three.
Okay.
Pieces.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, now we're on to our update to our certified staff.
Okay, I heard from quite a few of you in regards to the personal day language and the Certified Staff Compensation and Benefits Guide. I can say with certainty that I didn't feel good about where we landed after the May board meeting, and many of you didn't either. I don't want to speak for all certified staff, I'm pretty certain that they didn't feel good about it. So what, um, has been done since May, uh, immediately thereafter, had a meeting with Jessica Smith, uh, in essence, the point person for that advisory committee of certified staff. Had conversation with administrative team, had conversation with some of you individually, and also conversation with that advisory committee. And on that day, there were probably twelve, fifteen people in the room, there are twenty people on the committee. So went back to work and re-authored and updated policy on personal day language. Sent that to you late last week, Thursday, Friday, something like that, and it's remained the same since, uh, we met um, as an advisory committee at the beginning of June. This is broken into two categories, your use of personal days, and then your PDH day trades. Those are two different categories of the avenue by which you do this. Um, what you'll see there in the middle is a, a struck-out portion of days, there are no blackout days in regards to what you see there. The blackout days are the, um, in-service days and the parent-teacher conference days. Staff would need to pay for their personal days. Um, and that would be at the current rate of subpay. And the max would be, I know this was the conversation we had last time, just giving you highlights, would be five in any given day, including Fridays. So if some, something came up, you know, the graduation example we talked about, no one will be left hung out to dry. And then lastly, there's the saving grace of, you know, an act of God, if you will, something happened, I had no idea, and here I am, and I'm number six, and how do we make this happen? We can work with them to, to get it to happen. So those are the, the highlights. Um, did send to you the data of personal day use over the course of the last five school years. Last year and the year before is a little skewed because of COVID, but I did do an average of the months of March, April, May, and the spring of twenty twenty, and the average of November, December in twenty twenty-one, so it was a little more accurate. Um, there was a lot of personal day use this last calendar year in March, April, May. And, uh, that was one of the reasons that we got here in the first place. So, I'll take your feedback or questions, or however you want to proceed with personal day language, as you see it there on the screen.
Um, so if they take a PDH trade day for a, for a day off, um, is that, does that have a limit as far as, you know, like you have the five for the personal days?
Uh, no, there's not PDH day trade limit, like no more than four people or whatever, no.
Okay, and is that because we don't have that many that?
It doesn't, it doesn't happen very often, and the reason it doesn't is people are saving their PDH to trade in for salary growth rather than for days off. Some of our more senior staff are using them for days off, because they're not really moving on the salary scale anymore, but most folks save them for salary growth.
And if, so if they trade it in, then that's a, it goes back then, so they can't use that?
Right, you, you use twenty of them, so you're twenty further away from your salary growth, because professional development is what allows the salary growth.
Yep.
So they save them typically until April, May, and then cash them.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Yep. Last month, we went over this and we spent a long time on this. And we pretty much had two options, which was one, go with the plan that was originally written, or the, the plan that was edited after this was brought to your attention, that you just couldn't run the organization well, you wanted to have our children's best interests at play here, and it's with, with their own teachers. Or it was to go to the worser, like to ten personal, personal days, right? Wasn't it to lower it to ten personal paid days off?
Well, one of the conversations was one part of days, that was one of the conversations, one of many options, yes.
Okay. So, and again, I think the problem is, is this is like set, this is confronted to us. You know, I had three of my son's teachers in the front row, and with an average of a hundred and thirty-nine personal days used by teachers, for how many years you did it for? And last year's was two hundred and twelve.
Correct.
I think the teachers need to look at their peers who are abusing this and talk to them. That's why this is in our lap right now, it's because of abuse, is what, two hundred and. hundred and twelve is outrageous to me, when we averaged a hundred and thirty-nine for all those years. And that's why you came forward, and that's why we have the attention now. So I sure hope it gets to the great and good teachers, that if you know who's abusing this, you need to get them a check.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things. I mean, for one, we, for a long time, the teachers had asked to not have to pay for their personal leave days. They used to have to pay, and that's what's getting put back into the language, or is that's the recommendation. Now it is put back into the language. And so that curbs some of that is because then they would have to pay if they were going to take a personal day. And last year, they didn't. And I think, you know, part of it is, if you, if you say you're getting two personal days, most people are going to use them, you know? And especially if there's, if there's not a consequence for taking them and there's not a benefit for not taking them. Use them or lose them, right? So I think most people said, I might as well use them.
To your point, you know, a hundred and thirty-seven, March, April, and May of twenty-one, twenty-two school year, a hundred and thirty-seven equals and surpasses two of the four years of the four prior years. It equals all four and surpasses two of those years. So from March first through January, or June third this year, a hundred and thirty-seven were used, whereas in previous years, it was a one thirties and one forties. So to your point here, and I think it did become a use them or lose them kind of a philosophy, because there wasn't any consequence to using them and there wasn't any reason not to.
Incentive to not use them, right.
So the only thing that's changed, which I think has created this situation, is not having to pay for them. And this, you do. I don't think we're ever going to have this problem again. That's my estimation.
And I asked you this last time. Is this what you need to do to change to effectively run the organization to the best for our children?
Yes, we need staff in front of kids, and whatever we have to do to make that happen is what we should do. And I believe having to pay for the days will get people to be here in front of their kids. And we can still have folks that need to be gone for various reasons, such as graduations, or you got to do a house closing. You still can. And there won't be any avenue cut off to do that, because it's five in any given day. Because typically, the only days where there are more than five is days right before spring break or right before some sort of a long weekend. Those are the only days that you can get close to seven. Most days, it's zero, one, or two.
So I mean, I guess personally, I still, and I don't know, you know, looking at the budget and everything, how we take this into account. But I still think if we're going to give personal days, two personal days, that we should reward teachers for not taking them, not punishing them for taking them. But that's my perspective is, you know, if this is going to be part of the language that we're going to give personal days, then there should be an incentive for not taking them.
My response to advisory committee, and I believe my response here last month was this. So what that in essence presents to me is we're paying you to be here, and then we're paying you again for being here. And to me, I don't know that that's a sustainable way to go in regards to balancing a budget. And further, I'm not sure that's the right message to send to the community. But that's, again, your choice. That would be my response.
Yeah, I think the incentive here is that you don't have to pay for a day because you're not taking it, because you're being paid to be here. So, I mean, yes, it was a benefit, and the benefit fell short and kind of hit us. And it was a good trial run. And I don't think we can afford another year to say, let's see if we can get this under control. So this solves that, that we just go back to the way it was before. I mean, it's the way it was before, so why would we feel the need to incentivize it to go back to the way it was? There was no incentive there.
Sorry. The ancillary benefit, the secondary benefit of having personal days in place is this. If you have two personal days, it makes certain that if something comes up, Tom's graduate, son's graduation was an example, he can't control it. It's on a Friday, he's going to go. Is it, you don't have to use a sick day to do it. And a sick day has value to you in retirement or through your HSA if you're, and the younger retirement plan or the newer retirement plan. It has a benefit to you. Personal days, there is a saving grace to not have to do that. I think the approach to personal days became here, not just to use it or lose it, but also these are two extra days of vacation. They're not meant to be that. That was never the intention. The very first sentence says, "Personal leave days are to be used for compelling personal obligations, which cannot be reasonably conducted outside of the employee's workday." Like a house closing, it's at eleven o'clock on a Tuesday. You got to be there.
Yeah. And I'll go back to the point that I've made several times. If we take a salaried teacher who, a middle-of-the-road salary teacher at forty-three thousand dollars a year, your per day, what you're making per day based on a hundred and eighty-six-day contract is, well, is into the two hundreds. So even paying a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the sub, you're still netting a hundred and twenty dollars for that day. So it's not like, it's, this is an hourly job and you're not getting paid by, for those eight hours because you're getting paid by the hours, you're not there. So it still seems fair to me.
Please don't lose sight of what March, April, and May look like for these three, plus Cheryl. They were teaching. We can't do that. They had seven people gone, plus coaches that had to be gone for tennis or golf or whatever. They were teaching, and that's just not going to work. I mean, I appreciate they have high intellect and can probably get it done. They're all former teachers, but they need to be in their jobs. And that's what was happening a lot in March, April, and May.
Yeah. Or we have teachers covering for other teachers. And I mean, even just COVID, we discussed that that was a, it was bad, because then that puts onus on those teachers then to have to do their work that they're supposed to be doing, plus then somebody else's work. And that's not sustainable and not the best for the kids either, so. Well, I definitely think this plan is better. And did the committee think that this plan?
I can't speak for all members of the committee, but I believe our meeting held here was a dozen plus. I mean, it was a positive in regards to a step in the right direction. Is everyone pleased with all things? I would say that's not realistic. I think they still want to talk more about the paying for the days thing. I think that's still a sticking point, but progress, certainly. And we'll see what it looks like for next year. July first is on the list here. You submit your request starting on July first. We'll see what happens this Friday. If two or twenty people show up and what they're asking to do, I don't know. Progress, I think, step in the right direction.
I think this leaves, leaves me with a better taste of my mouth this way than it did prior to, we're taking these dates out, we're, you know, we're not-
Yeah.
I like that. I like the fact that we've got this language in there that regards for something that comes up, some act of God, if you will, somebody can still end up going to something that's important. There's some, there's some latitude there. I don't think that, you know, hopefully, nobody's going to be told you can't attend something important because five other people have the day off already.
No. If it's, has to happen, it's going to happen.
So I like this. It's a little more palatable to me.
I would agree. I feel much better about this than last month. And, you know, it might not be ideal for everybody, but yes, it's a good compromise and a good place in the middle, I think.
I mean, as a, as a board, it's our job to do what's best for the kids, for the instruction and what we're supposed to do, and to be financially responsible to the district. And I believe what happened before wasn't financially responsible to the district, and that that's our job as a board, is to make sure that we, we are. I mean, we would like to be wonderful to our employees and, and have, have them feel good about coming to work. And hopefully, this language change would not be enough to rile people up to the point where they don't feel good about the place that they work anymore. So hopefully, they'll see this as a compromise. And I think that's what we ask for at these negotiations, is that all parties can have everything they want, but we have to meet in the middle. So I think this is a good meet in the middle.
It'll work.
We'll see, we'll see, no.
Yep. Well, and there's the element of trust with our staff that we uphold, that they're doing the right things for the students. I mean, that's ultimately what we ask for.
Yeah.
Yep. Anybody else? Is there a motion to accept those changes to the Certified Staff Compensation and Benefits?
I'll make a motion. We approve the updates to the Certified Staff contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cheryl? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, there we go. We spent a lot of time on that, so.
Yes, not tonight, but yes, over the course of two months, yes.
Well, we've always spent a lot of time because that's our business.
Yes, yes.
In two months, we spent a lot more time on that than given the hundred and-
Sixteen.
Fifteen or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's doable.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Okay. And next, the staff contracts.
Staff contracts, administrative contracts, which means building principals, and then your non-certified staff folks, like Stacy Sixworth in the office, or Becky, or Andy, that are not perhaps a building principal. It's all of those contracts. Remember back in May, you did letters of appointment for support staff, and then you did certified staff contracts for teaching staff. This is simply the next step in that process. You approve those contracts. They all have them in place. If you're wondering what the increase was, was two point five percent, same as it was for certified staff. The total increase dollar-wise decreases dramatically, and that Cheryl is retiring at the top end. Congratulations, Cheryl. And we're bringing someone in at the lower end. So your increase is some twenty thousand as opposed to what it would be if you, if Cheryl were back, because Cheryl's been here for a while. So that's what the budgetary impact is, and it's a budgeted expense.
I'll make a motion. I approve those contracts.
And a second?
Second.
Cheryl? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope. There we go. Then we get a fun one. Donations.
Donations to the district, staff appreciation donations. Thank you to the following people who donated boxes of Girl Scout cookies to the middle school staff members. Apparently, they didn't find the district office, because I would have had some of those. We did. They must not have passed Andy.
That's right.
Did that keep yours?
He ain't here to defend himself.
He's up on the roof yet.
He is. Danielle Anderson, Amy Danielson, Anna Elifson, Jenny Hat, Erin Hosking, Tasha Swent, and Melissa Fearkens. So thank you for those cookies. The, thank you to Tasha Swent, who donated boxes of Girl Scout cookies to the high school. Again, we missed the district office, at least my office.
And bus drivers.
To the high school staff members and bus drivers in memory of Girl Scout daughter Sierra Osborn. Indian Head Glass for the house construction project number four donated a shower door. That was again from Indian Head Glass.
Wow, nice.
Nice. Growing Wish's Greenhouse and Garden, thank you for the purchase of a vibraphone for the music department. I wish I was an expert enough to tell you what a vibraphone is. Anyone in the room know what that is?
There's a picture of it.
There's a picture. That doesn't help me much, but thank you.
It's kind of like a really expensive xylophone.
I guess so.
You need to get one for your boys.
I don't think I do.
And your drum set.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donations to the district with many thanks.
Yes.
Great for us.
And a second?
Second.
Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Wonderful.
None.
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 Nobody's going to say that.
All right. And we have our personnel action items.
New employee and athletic contracts for Holly Andrews, a fourth grade teacher, Jody Betcher for AIM-
Fifth grade or fourth grade?
Fifth.
Fifth grade, sorry. AIM teacher, which is a multi, multi-level, three, four, and five. Nathan Cunningham, high school math. Andrew Egert for grounds, transportation, and vehicle maintenance. Mackenzie Gudrow for speech and language pathology. Megan Jensen, intermediate school para. Isaac Karpinski, middle school football assistant coach. And Leah Maxon for clubhouse lead teacher. Reassignments in district, Heidi Blumer moving from special ed para to middle school custodian. Brenda Crowe's moving from fifth grade to sixth grade math. Chelsea Driscoll moving from clubhouse lead teacher to special ed para. Peggy Lundgren moving from custodian to clubhouse assistant teacher. Retirement's Sue Bealmeier, AIM teacher at the intermediate school. And lastly, resignation of Brock Lumen for JV C-team football coach.
A motion to accept those changes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the personnel action items.
Even though I don't want Sue Bealmeier to go.
As is the case with most of the retirees, they're not certain they want to go either.
Yeah, yeah. It's tough. And a second?
Second.
There's a tie. Who gets it?
Cheryl.
Okay. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Those are taken care of. We will continue, we will take a motion and go into closed session.
So moved.
Erin?
Second.
I'll give it to Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Opposed? None. Thank you very much for the meeting.